Good evening, everyone. I will call this board of aldermen meeting to order. If you please rise for this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Bowman.
Present.
Alderman Bachman.
Present.
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Long. Absent. Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Levison.
Here.
Mayor Haskins.
Here, and we do have a quorum. Good evening, everyone. We do not have any ceremonial matters tonight, so it's time I will open the floor to public participation. Anybody who has anything to bring before this board, you may step forward at this time.
I'm still in town. I'm still concerned.
Just give Randy your address, and that's the meeting. There you go. Thank you.
My own property in town, and I have been a longtime member of your Cass Regional Costco Foundation Board, and am also a volunteer. And I'm concerned, as I volunteered this morning, that we had no Oaks buses through our driveway, and nobody coming through the driveway. I was there four hours plus, and I said to the people in charge, I said, "So where are all of our Oak persons that would come on all those Oak buses?" Because that's the only transportation those people have to get there with a wheelchair to be cared for. And they said, "Well, we haven't had any Oak transportation since the first of the year." So my concern to you is, I don't know how to initiate, I don't know where it comes from, but you need to understand that we have a lot of older people here in town, they get no meals on wheels because that's how they're delivered, and they have no transportation to our hospital, and no way to get a wheelchair or any care at all. So my concern is, how does that operate? And we need to understand that better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Thank you, Kirk.
All right. Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the public participation, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Before you tonight are the minutes from the regular meeting of February 19, 2019.
Move to approve.
Sir.
I have a motion from Alderman Levison, and a second from Alderman Dickerson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Minutes are approved. Moving on to our agenda items. First tonight, we have the Farmer's Market 2019. Yeah, ready for that. Get rid of the snow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the board of aldermen, before you tonight, I have the next three items, if you don't mind, and all kind of together. I'll just talk about all three of them.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
First one is the Farmer's Market. They are requesting to do that again this year. This is, we've done this for several years, I think this is going on about number 10. We've had no problems. They're wanting to do it the Saturdays from June through September, from roughly 7:00 AM till 1:00 PM. Again, we've had no problems in the past with that. We recommend approval.
Okay.
I had that one halftime. I had a brand-new spoon, and I didn't know how to shut it off. I threw it to somebody. Don't feel bad. I did it myself.
Wish they'd throw it at the wall.
Well, I actually threw it to someone sitting right there. It was the first day I had it. I said, "Shut this off for me." Never bought another iPhone.
Technology's great.
Only if you're not using it.
That's right.
Carry on. Second thing we have is the junk in the trunk. They're wanting to do that the second Saturday of the month, up on the square, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Again, they've done this, probably over six years, had no problems, been a good event bringing people to the square.
Is that 4:00 to 9:00, or 4:00 to 7:00? It's like, wow! We're really extending the hours.
Okay. The way that outpatient looks, it is 7:00.
Okay. Okay, 4:00 to 7:00. Okay, like you said, 4:00 to 9:00, it's like, wow! That's a long junk in the trunk.
That popped me away, and I was actually writing this, too, so I should. 4:00 to 7:00, on the square, no problems. We recommend approval.
All right.
Last thing, in conjunction with the July 27th, from 8:00 till 2:00 PM, they would like, July 27th, Farmer's Market, they would like to co-host a tractor show at that time, antique tractor show. Last year was the first time they had done that. They also had a parade involved with it. I think Mr. Welch took care of that one. No problems. Again, staff recommend it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions on any of these?
Do we move to approve it all, Sam, or do we need to do any some things?
Sure. Want to just do them all together?
If somebody objects.
Do you want to make that motion?
Make a motion to approve all three?
I have a motion from Alderman Milner, and a second from Alderman Turner to approve the Farmer's Market, the junk in the trunk, and the antique tractor show for 2019. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. All three are approved. Thank you. All right. We are ready for Council Bill 11.
Council Bill 11. A resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, directing staff to suspend and delay the acceptance and processing of development applications, applications for building permits and business licenses, or activities related to medical marijuana as described in Amendment 2, Amendment to the Missouri Constitution, approved by the voters of the state of Missouri on November 6, 2018, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor, members of the board, as you all know, the voters approved Amendment Number 2, legalizing medical marijuana in November. The state's now developing regulations. They are to issue those regulations by the 1st of June, start accepting applications later on, then later on in the summer by the first week of August, and then those who receive, are the recipients of the licenses, will find out about them in December. All the cities right now are busy taking a look at their regulations in terms of amendments that we're going to have to make to enable and be able to properly enforce Amendment 2. This includes changes to the zoning ordinance, to the licensing ordinance, enforcement ordinances, some changes to the building and fire codes. All the cities now are starting to, starting that process. What this resolution does is it establishes a temporary administrative delay on receiving any applications relating to medical marijuana until we are complete with our, with the changes that we're making to our regulations. We will still talk to people that have questions, that may have an interest in submitting, but we would not be receiving any building permits, any zoning applications, business licenses, anything related to medical marijuana until after we adopt our regulations, or August 3rd, which is the outside deadline, whichever of those occurs first. And again, the reason we picked August 3rd is because that's when, that's when the state is going to start accepting applications. Right now, we're waiting on the, the state to start issuing their administrative regulations that they're developing. We're also waiting to see if we get a model ordinance out of the, out of the Missouri Municipal League, or the Regional Council. And as soon as those things happen, then we'll be coming to you with amendments to our regulations. So we recommend approval. As I mentioned, some of the other cities, some of our neighbors have adopted the same resolution that you're looking at tonight, two examples being Raymore and Lee Summit, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question. I seen on the news that Kansas City has already got a marijuana place open and running now. Are we going to be able to look at their criteria as to how they set theirs up?
We could, yes.
And then also, everybody knows I go to Warsaw a lot, they have one also set up that's up and running right now.
Wow.
Yep.
I don't know.
So, yeah, I don't know. We're talking about this, and I'm in favor of this ordinance, but I just wonder if we're going to try to make contact to help get this moving a little faster, because I know you have applicants that want to start opening.
Yeah, we're all ready. Yeah, we've been collecting anything that would help us that we can, but we're most waiting for a model ordinance to come out, because we think it would be better for us to kind of, to have similar, as similar as possible to what the other cities have, unless we need to make some changes because of something unique in our community. We just think that that would stand up better in the future if we were all operating off the same or a similar ordinance.
Alderman Milner, do you have a comment?
Well, I just was, I was curious, when you said we're not even going to accept, do we, we're not going to be, because it is passed in Missouri now, do we just say, "At this time, we're not accepting," or are we going to accept and hold?
We would not accept.
Okay.
We would not accept.
Okay.
And part of the reason we're wanting to do that is so that everybody can submit under the same set of rules, because we'll answer whatever questions we can, but there's going to be some questions that you all have to make some final determinations on, and we want everybody to be submitting under the same set of rules.
If I, if I may, and there, one, I've looked over the Amendment 2, or at least summary, and one of the provisions in there is that local governments cannot establish rules, regulations that contradict or in, oppose in some manner, and not even the regulation, so not just the statute. And since the regulations haven't been created yet, it's hard for the city to know what resolution they might violate if they do go too early. And in addition to that, I suspect that depending on how they set up those regulations, there's a lot of different types of licensing requirements, whether it's to the manufacturing side, or the retail side, and safety considerations, that I suspect we will want to make sure that we know to ask for, "Did you get these items done before we start accepting?" That should be part of our application, I think makes sense, because otherwise we'll waste our time and find out somebody doesn't have a license, or whatever. So there's a number of reasons. There's, there's very little, most of it talks about what the state needs to do, and then you get down towards the end, and it states certain general areas the city can regulate, but until, like I said, the regulations come out, we're kind of shooting in the dark, I think.
And we're expecting a memo to probably come out with some guidelines.
Now, they, they didn't have anything at the, at the February conference. They said it's been discussed, but they haven't, I mean, they haven't pulled anything out. And I think, I think the hold is important, because the one thing, we've gotten complaints before, is that, well, what I was told is not, when I came back, is not what I was told again. We definitely don't want to tell somebody one thing, and then come back and say, "Well, that's not what I got from you when I filled out my application." I think it is wise, and the fact that other cities are doing the same thing. I mean, again, we, we look at our own city, make sure it makes sense. I think why you do it makes sense, and so the fact other cities are doing makes more sense, so.
I've probably talked to three people that are considering submitting applications for licenses, and told them that we were recommending to you all that you adopt this administrative hold, and I didn't get any pushback.
Isn't there a limit on the number of licenses that are issued? Didn't you say something?
Yes.
I believe it's by congressional district.
It's based upon congressional district, and.
24.
There's actually different.
24 is congressional district.
There's actually some that are based on population, depending what the license is, and some based on congressional district. So until the state works, issues all the licenses and says, "Okay, this is a group," I suppose it's even possible we could get an application for someone that doesn't even eventually ultimately get licensed by the state.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
Do we have any idea, any kind of an idea of how long this process is going to take?
Well, I'm hoping that we'll be done. I'm hoping it will be done. We would need, we would need to be coming to you in July. Now, if we hear there's going to be some delays from the state in issuing their regs or whatever, we may be coming back to you and saying, "We need an extension." But the way this is set up is August 3rd is our outside deadline.
So we could be fairly confident that within a year or so, we?
Yeah, if they, if they notify the individuals that are, the people that received the licenses in December of this year, whether, you know, a manufacturing operation or growing operation will take longer to set up, but, you know, they'll be coming in as soon as possible for building permits, which I'm sure they'll need. Dispensaries, they'll need tenant finish permits, you know, they'll probably, you'll probably see them first.
Didn't you and Mr. Welch attend a workshop recently?
We attended a workshop.
Who sponsored that workshop?
Well, I.
Have you been to a second one?
We had one down at the Regional Council.
Okay.
Which was packed. And did you attend the second one?
No. Well, there's another one, there's another one tomorrow night that is, Department of Health and Senior Services is collecting information, and they've been doing this for the public. So they're having a meeting tomorrow night at UMKC, and Mark is coordinating that.
And I'm sure that there was helpful information that came out of that workshop.
Particularly individuals who have worked in some of the states previously, where they have had medical marijuana for a couple of years.
Correct. Okay. And just one question, the August 3rd, I mean, do we want to put a timeframe in there, or do we want to just say, "Until we're ready"? Does that put us?
Staff works better with deadlines.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea, and that, like you said, he can always come back for an extension. I think that's.
That's true.
I don't disagree with that. I think it gives people an expectation, too, which is probably good, too.
I believe the target date for the state to issue their regs is early June.
Yes.
Yep.
So.
So we're hoping July.
Hopefully, if they meet their deadline, that gives us some time to work up the ordinance by August 3rd or the 4th.
Okay. Any other comments?
I make a motion, we approve Council Bill 11.
Okay.
Second.
A motion from Alderman Turner, and a second from Alderman Milner for approval of Council Bill 11. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. And Council Bill 11 will become Resolution R 008. Council Bill 12.
Council Bill 12, an ordinance to accept the final plat of the Oaks replat, replat of lots 12, 13, 14, and the recreation area of the Oaks, second addition, in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
The ordinance approving this replat comes to you with a recommendation of approval from staff, and a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicants requesting to increase the number of lots in the Oaks manufactured home park from 34 to 37, increase to three. They're doing this by replanting the southwest corner of the, of the park, and then also moving a recreation area, which now is about three-quarters of an acre in size, to, moving it to the southern boundary of the park, and the recreation area will now be a little over an acre in, in size. You might have seen some, some discussion in the staff report. There was a condition on it when we, before we went to the planning commission, that the city engineer needed to accept what we call a simplified stormwater management plan. He had approved that before the planning commission meeting, and the planning commission proved this, or recommended that you approve it, subject to the stipulation that as individual lots develop, as manufactured homes are placed on those lots, if the code requires them to have an elevation certificate, then they would have to get that.
Very good.
And the applicants are in the audience, Sam Strong and John Coffey.
The questions asked at planning and zoning were mostly around whether or not there was enough water retention, that was the only concern brought up there, and Mr. Steyer provided a detailed analysis of, there's plenty of runoff in the existing pond or lake, whatever you want to classify it.
Capacity.
Yeah, it has plenty of capacity, so this will have a, pretty much a zero effect on that, that can handle anything. I mean, it already handles more than what that park provides, so there was, there was no issue with that. And then again, the, having to have the, the level of the, of the home place, having that certificate, so.
And we do have one correction to the ordinance, as you have it in the first whereas, the second sentence. We've got a proven ordinance to accept the final plat of, it's supposed to be a capital T for V Oaks. Missed that one. Everything else is okay.
Because it's correct, and where I consider the critical parts of the ordinance, I don't think it's a fatal flaw, but I suggested to Happy he just at least publicly give you that advice. I think we can move forward as it is.
Very good. Okay. Any questions? This is adding some more lots to an existing park, which adds more homes, which I think is a, a good thing. It, to me, is kind of a no-brainer, but this is an ordinance. If you wanted to wait for a second reading, we can, or you could suspend the ruling and move Council Bill 12 to a second reading.
Any motion that we move Council Bill 12 to a second reading?
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson, and a second from Alderman Milner to move Council Bill 12 to second reading. Is there any further discussion? I'll need a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Levison.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Bowman.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Bachman.
Aye.
Alderman Long is absent.
Okay. Second reading, please.
Second reading, Council Bill 12, an ordinance to accept the final plat of the Oaks replat, a replat of lots 12, 13, 14, and the recreation area of the Oaks, second addition, in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Okay. Roll call again, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Bachman.
Aye.
Alderman Long is absent. Alderman Bowman.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Levison.
Aye.
And Alderman Reese.
Aye.
All right. And Council Bill 12 will become ordinance 03459. Thank you, Mr. Coffey, for your continued investment. Council Bill 13.
First reading, Council Bill 13, an ordinance to rezone the property described as a Southland Shopping Center at 1799-1811 East Mechanic Street, and 204-208 from the C1 Local Business Zoning District to the C2 Service Business Zoning District in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Right.
This, this ordinance, this rezoning comes to you with a recommendation of approval from both staff, and a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicants requested the rezoning from C1 to C2, primarily to have more opportunities to better keep the center leased up and occupied. Some of the additional uses that you have in C2 that you don't have in C1 is alcohol sales, alcohol sales with food, restaurants, meeting hall, automotive equipment sales, pet grooming. Those are some that you have in C2 that you don't have in C1. In the process of doing this, we also discovered that Dollar General, which I think has been there since 2006, selling beer and wine, didn't have the proper zoning, so this will.
That's why it's a popular place.
So this, this corrects, this brings them, and them into conformance. We were also asked, there's a business in there, forgotten the name of it.
Bolia.
Bolia? Scandinavian furniture, that we were asked to make sure that with the rezoning, we didn't put them into a legal non-conforming status. The good news is, we aren't doing that. They were conforming before, or they were not conforming in C1. This would make them conforming. The bad news is, they're not renewing their lease for some business reasons that I'm not sure of, so they won't be with us after the 30th of April. When we were looking at this, one of the concerns, you know, you weigh the pros and the pros and the minuses when you make your recommendation. There are some uses in C2 that would not be appropriate there. Automotive sales, farm machinery sales, but in looking at this, we think that the, the probability of those ever wanting to go there are so slim, because it doesn't have the traffic, it doesn't have the visibility like you have on 291, and you have an existing center. I mean, most of the time when you're zoning property, you're zoning raw land, and so there's still an unknown there. Well, here we're dealing with an existing center, but those just wouldn't fit into. So we think that, we think that the pros for helping keep this center leased up, which we think will be a benefit to the entire neighborhood, far outweigh the minuses, and that's why we recommended approval.
Questions?
I move Council Bill 13 to a second reading.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I need, one, Kim Barlow is representing the owner, Harrisonville LLC, is in the audience, and two, this is a public hearing item, since it's a rezoning.
So we need to open a public hearing?
Yeah.
Well, then we will, we will open a public hearing before we have any questions or discussions.
And then let's redo the first.
Correct. All right. Now, we had to do the public hearing first. I didn't have a note, but I apologize. Okay. So at this time, before we have Council Bill 13, I, at this time, I will open the public hearing for the rezoning of the Southland Shopping Center. Is there anybody who would like to speak? That would be your opportunity.
Hi. I think so. I just got a question.
There's no public hearing on the agenda.
Right.
And doesn't community development require a 15-day notice on public hearing?
It was advertised.
It was properly advertised.
It was advertised.
Well, we can do, we can hold off.
And letters were.
Let's hold off for a second reading until the next meeting.
Wait for that.
Make sure we put it on the agenda.
Letters were sent about both public hearings, the planning zoning in here, to everybody within 185 feet, a legal notice.
And we didn't get the memo.
But I didn't get to the memo.
Okay.
Just redo it next time.
That sounds good. I, I have a feeling this will be kind of a no-brainer, but it, we want to be sure we've got it known properly, so it's not an issue, so, all right? So no public hearing, and we're going to scratch first reading. We'll have first reading. We will redo the first reading, because we need to have that.
After.
After the public hearing, so.
Okay.
But if you have any additional questions that you'd like to ask at this time, to speed it up next time, you're free to ask now, or we can wait for the next meeting. Okay.
And so the public hearing, because we need to do it to a date certain, will be continued to. What's the date of our next meeting?
March 18.
March 18. Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Is that sufficient time to, to advertise it for that date?
It's, it's a postponement, not a cancellation, so it's already been advertised.
It's been advertised, but just not put on the agenda.
Right.
Right.
Right. That was an issue.
Okay. All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda items tonight, so we will move on to the alderman committee reports. Alderman Bowman.
Well, you know, the weather has interfered with a lot of things. I'm ready for spring, but I'll tell you that I had the opportunity to participate in the rescheduled Valentine's Dinner Dance for the population at Casco on Saturday evening, and they always have a great time. We, the businesswomen provide spaghetti supper for them, and they dance and have just a grand time, and so we were glad to be able to have it happen. It was a little bit tenuous there for a while because of the snowstorm that came in Saturday night, but it was a great event, and I was proud to be a participant in it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Bachman.
Welcome.
Alderman Reese.
It was just nice to see so many people here. We enjoyed the participation. Thanks for coming.
All right. Alderman Milner.[1646.82] Alderman Milner?
Yeah.
All right. Alderman Dickerson?
Well, I'd just like to say that our paper picked a poor time to put some people's personal business on the front page of the paper, and I think it's in very poor taste, and I hope it doesn't happen again.
Alderman Turner? Alderman Levison?
Can I ask you both for a question?
If you use your microphone, you sure can.
Hey, I was curious, did we ever fill all our dispatcher positions that needed to be filled? Or do we still have some?
That's a yes and no question. It's not technically filled, but we've got an offer out to somebody.
Okay. Okay, I just wondered how that was going since we gave Rose.
She's got the, the pre-employment drug screen, then Mr. Welch's approval, and then she'll be hired.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Welch?
I gave you an updated city administrator report, just to follow up on the Facebook thing that we talked about at the last meeting. We changed related pages to pages liked by this page. Finished that on the February 20th, didn't have any issues making the change. What we've seen the last couple of weeks is some drops in new likes, but we're wondering if that's because the weather turned kind of nice for a week or so, and then, you know, got bad again. So we're going to keep watching that trend through March and see if that does make a difference. Again, we're looking at switching it back after the election anyway, but it may be affecting us a little bit negatively, because we're not getting as many new people as we had before. And that's it, unless you have any questions about my report.
I like the fact that the cities and the school are passing information around. It's nice to see that Facebook one has something and the other pops it out and vice versa, so I think it's very informative.
I think Daniel's doing a fine job.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. You are do, you are doing a very good job. So it's hard to keep up with everything he puts out. So, all right. First thing I'd like to ask is, I know people are asking about tree limbs, and my answer has to continue to be, the weather is plaguing us with a pickup or, or drop-off or anything, because it's hard to do anything with the snow, and then when it does melt the snow off, then it's muddy and nasty. Have we figured out any dates we're looking at potentially? I know the weather is going to be contingent.
What it may come down to, with the amount of time that we've had to put this off, we are probably going to just open it up for shipping, but we're going to get the limbs because of the way the, the schedule's been. Until it really gets dry.
Until things dry off, we can't get people in up there.
Right, right. That's what I, and that's what I've been sharing with people, is it's.
We're also going to come through another spring storm season too, so.
Yeah. I mean, I, my fear is, is we're going to go straight for, I mean, it's going to be winter, spring, and everybody's going to want to get yards cleaned up, which I completely understand, and, I mean, I've, I've got all mine piled at the edge of my yard, but it's, again, you can't, there's nowhere to go, with it being muddy or frozen, or whatever the case might be, so I just want people to know we're still planning, we're just.
We are.
Until the weather gives in.
And I put some more thought into this, but I'd like to talk to Happy about it first, let him present it to you.
Okay. Very good. Did you have any, do you have a comment on that, Mr. Turner?
I'm just curious, with the weather and that, if we look at the cost of what, the habit of office versus paying a crew, run with chipper and chipping.
That's the other option, is that we just start, we do that, we put out people to call in with their addresses. And pick them up. Yeah. That means that we don't get something done. So the option on that is that we would send the trucker out, but they wouldn't be able to trim the limbs back like they did.
And knock it out.
I guess 2012.
Right.
We can be like Kansas City and tell our people that it won't be till next year, but they come and get those limbs ordered.
Well, that does help us, because they, we could, we could, we were still going to get it, it's just, it, it does show that everybody's in the same boat. I mean, potholes and everything, it's, it's just a challenge.
When we do determine a date, I know there's some people out at the Elsalodge, and have a crew, and they have a trailer, they're willing to go around people's houses and pick limbs and haul them out.
I think we'll have several, I think we'll have several volunteers on that.
I think it'll be a big, it'll be a big parade, we'll have a parade out to the, to the dump site. Decorate your trailer with tree limbs. Who can make the neatest figures? So, all right. Moving on, I want to thank the ladies for bringing up the Oaks bus, that is something that we suggested sending to committee to have some further discussion on. One of the challenges we run into with, with something like that coming at this time is, we've passed the budget season, and so we have the budget set. There's only so much money, but it doesn't mean that there's not things that could change later in the year. I think it's something we definitely need to discuss and maybe bring them in here and, you know, the, the, I, I think it was a little premature to say that we're not interested or don't care about it, we just, the, the, it's just a, you know, we just briefly heard of it, I had not heard that they were not running during the shutdown until recently, and then they're cut in funding, so it is important, it is a, it does provide a service. However, it does cost a, a good chunk of money, so that's not something you can just say, oh yeah, we can cover that, no problem, we have to do some planning, but definitely take another look at that. And I'm surprised Alderman Levison didn't bring up the show choir, didn't?
Well, they made it back home safe.
Well, that, that, that was important, and then.
We were happy about that.
They did what they.
Third runner-up.
Third runner-up, yes.
Third runner-up. Emma said they had the best show ever for their finals.
I heard they had, there was a lot of good shows up there, the, some friends of mine went, they said it was very good, it's nice to see our kids, you know, it's another good representation of our schools, and, and so congratulations to them. Alderman Reese makes the comment of the audience, I agree, it's nice to see him. I want to recognize a few gentlemen that are here almost every night that we have a meeting, Mr. Lime Cooler, Mr. Carl, and Mr. Miller have been coming to meetings for, what, 10 years now?
One more.
Yeah. So always familiar faces out, faces out there, and, but we appreciate the new faces too, and I think it's good to come and, and see what's going on, and you're always welcome, so. Did you have?
Yeah. To touch on your Oaks, I, I called out the Oaks last Thursday, and I told the lady, they just got their funding back. They're starting their house Friday, which was booked, and she said they'll be servicing Harrisonville Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays.
Correct.
Just for dialysis. Just for dialysis.
Well, that's supposed to be all. That's not what they told me. I mean, they're running the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, they need to call out.